All the meet in order and sincerely we all wish Jim Wood a great day on his birthday today. We'll begin with the city council briefing. The first one will be Wildfire 5G and Ben Davenport, who's been very active in this, is going to make the introduction. Ben, we're glad to see you here.
Thank you Mayor Sessom, some members of council, and it is my distinct privilege today to introduce Wildfire 5G, a new internet service provider that is coming to the area with a pilot program in the Lake Edward Campus East neighborhood. And I think this all goes back to city council's wise decision two years ago to embark on a middle mile strategy. And the middle mile strategy was all about attracting competition to the city of Virginia Beach. And so with that, I'd like to introduce Wildfire 5G Dave Deming, the CEO. We also have Ed York, the head RF engineer, and Roger Morrison from Wildfire 5G.
Well, glad to have you all here. Glad to have you. Dave, welcome.
Thank you, and I understand we're going to keep this to 10 minutes. We're going to have Q and A at the end. So Ben, give me the high sign if I get long-winded.
Yes, you got it.
Give me the hook. And I appreciate you all being here today. It's been a wonderful journey to get here. It's been gratifying to know that our company, our mission, Wildfire 5G, reaching the unreachable, not only connecting rural America, but connecting those who are underserved and those who are unserved as far as broadband connectivity. And as I get started, I just want to talk about how we look at this from our mission as a company to be significant in each household, in each community, one person, one household at a time with the offering that we have. And we think being significant and having a positive impact will lead to success. So as you think about what we're all trying to do here, you're here having a significant impact on the community. Each and every one of you are serving with a servant leader mentality. And as a company, we want to go in and serve the communities, be involved in the communities, and have a significant impact. And we think that'll lead to business success and sustainability. Having said that, let's just talk about what Wildfire 5G is. We are a partnership between Microsoft. They are very instrumental in what we're doing. And they have worked with us for about the past year now, looking, reviewing our technology, and I'll get into some of that in a few minutes, and creating what they have now called the Airband Initiative, but the Rural Broadband Initiative that was announced July 11th with Brad Smith in Washington DC. And we're a key part of that, going into providing low-cost, affordable access, high performance, and a hybrid network. And it's a protected internet to underserved areas and unserved areas in the United States, with the Hampton Roads Virginia Beach area being our initial extension of our project from Northwest Georgia with Microsoft. What we're, just very quickly, it's a hybrid network. We use the best of the latest technologies, and we utilize those in a three-layer level to provide coverage and capacity for local areas. And we can get into a little bit of detail. We're just going to do it on a surface level today. And then offline, we can take specific questions that anybody might have. From a performance, it's been confirmed, cost, quality, security, customer portals, installation techniques. We have about 200 square miles built out in Northwest Georgia. The compatibility and accuracy assessed and approved. And it's, as we move forward on this in Northwest Georgia, here and in other states with Microsoft in this partnership, this next phase in your area, we are going to demonstrate how we can rapidly deploy this over the upcoming months on a, what we don't even consider an ambitious time schedule, what we consider a realistic time schedule, as our process of deployment is unique. Next. Here's what we've done. This is what we've been working on in Northwest Georgia, and as I said, built out 200 square miles. This particular terrain in Northwest Georgia is very hilly, very challenging. As you know, your area is pretty flat. So from a deployment standpoint, that makes this look much, much easier, a much more efficient deployment. Microsoft has been down, worked with us, looked at this network, verified what we're doing. We're working with the emergency management services in Whitfield County, Northwest Georgia. We've taken on a serious role there. What we've delivered is low-cost consumer offering. We have a high-value enterprise offering. We're mainly focused on the consumer. And we've, as I said, 200 square miles of deployed covering about 79,000. And what we have also that's a little different, a differentiator, we call them the four Ps, performance, which is up to 300 megabits. What we're looking at on a wide-scale basis, both rural is up to 100 megabits, and that's what most devices can handle. And we're also looking at a protected internet. By protected, we have a filtering system at the source that filters out all adult material, pornography, gambling, and malware. This is very important as you get also into the school districts, as they find a tremendous cost savings having this filtered out right from the source. We also, from a process, the fourth P is how we deploy the network. We have a very efficient deployment process. It's in weeks, not months and years, where we can cover an area, and we'll get into a little bit of detail on that. General terms, this is the mapping for the deployment of our target area here in Virginia Beach, in the Lake Edwards area. And the pilot access points, and again, at some point, we can, if anybody wants to get into the weeds on the technology side, Ed York, our engineer here, can talk briefly about what we're going to deploy, how we're going to deploy it. And as I said, we've got this kind of configuration, just think 200 square miles in Northwest Georgia that's been done and tested and proven out, and it's fully operational. Just real quickly, subdivision, long-range solution. Ed, if you have a couple of brief comments here?
Sure. This is just an illustrative example of how the network works. We have fiber networks that the community needs access to. So what we do is we hook up the fiber to the tower location, and we install our antenna system. And then that transmits a radio frequency signal throughout the community. And on each customer's house that would like the service, we install a small antenna. This is not drawn to scale, it's just big enough so you can see it, but it's very small. That signal catches it, brings it into, inside the house where Wi-Fi coverage fills the entire house. And it's high-speed, low-cost. Currently, there's 23 million people in the country with no high-speed internet, and 64 million people that have low-quality internet, not up to standard. So that's what our mission is, is to make, you know, this is a low-cost model. The other telecom companies that I've worked for, they don't want to spend money on areas like this because they can't get a return on investment. So we've changed the model to address this kind of part of the country.
Short-range solution, as you get into subdivision, go to the next one please. And then as we get out into the rural areas, the rural solution. And part of the rural solution is also the TV white space, and that's something you've heard a bit about from Microsoft. That's when you get into very low-density areas. You have a farm, you might have five people per square mile residences. And this is where we'd utilize that third layer, as we call it, which propagates a signal. You can get out into the, up to eight miles on point-to-multi-point connections. And we can do this in the rural areas and provide areas that are uncovered at this particular point with robust internet connectivity.
This is just another example. If fiber is difficult to get to another location, we can set up what's called a hot bridge, where the fiber is linked from one location to the next, so that we can activate coverage in this area, which would be difficult to reach in a fiber network, for example. So we have that capability as well.
So a new paradigm. No contracts. It's, you've probably heard the term last-mile solution many times and wondering what that was. Well, we think we have the last-mile solution. We've demonstrated it. We have it up and running in a live network, and we're going to do the same thing here. Family-safe network with filtered content. We think that's important. We think the, our filtration system is, we're using one of the best in the world, and we'll keep improving and upgrading that. As I said, it saves the school districts a tremendous amount of money, I think, from a family standpoint, and even in the office environment. Having the filtered contact can be very helpful. Plus, it inherently makes our network much faster, because there's tremendous amount of traffic with all of those on the internet. So we inherently have a cheaper network by filtering. What our expectations are, I can't tell you how wonderful and cooperative the city of Virginia Beach has been. It's, yes, everyone should give themselves a hand, because it's a real challenge to get everyone to say "we," and let's do this together, and let's cooperate and make things happen. But it's, again, as I watch what's going on here and watch what's going on in the rest of Hampton Roads, you truly are a model for how we can come up with a solution. It's not you or I or us against them, it's a "we" thing. And that's truly being a servant leader and trying to serve the community, and we greatly appreciate it. We're going to, creating a true public safety network. We've done that, and we'll get into some of those details with the city and how we're, how we can provide some pre-connectivity and devices and so forth. Bridging urban and rural. And also a network that drives community and tourism. We're really working hard to have a unique, robust network for you that people coming into town can utilize, the city can communicate what you're doing with your wonderful natural topography and this great region for tourism around here. And we're bridging urban and rural. And in all of this, I don't want to forget about the homework app. We're going to offer one free account for every student in the school. So there's no reason a student can't go home, take that free account on their device, and use that, use that at home. That's going to be something that's important to us. And we also want to talk about how we're going to work with the teachers in the school districts as well. Because the homework app, if we want to be competitive, we've got to close that. We've got to eliminate that, eradicate that, and provide everybody that's given all these unique gifts and abilities to fully develop them. And connectivity, broadband connectivity is one of the keys for that in this day and We're completing these, the partnership agreement. We'll deliver pilot locations and a 2017-18 plan. And all of these are in process in an incredibly cooperative spirit. And once again, we really appreciate your confidence of Wildfire. I appreciate, we all appreciate what you're doing to make this happen. And we're going to be an asset to your community, and we're going to be part of your community. And any suggestions at all for any of us here at Wildfire, or for Ben, I'm sure you interact there quite a bit. It's an open-door policy. We always want to live, we live to learn, and we want to learn how we can serve your community better.
Thank you. Questions from Rosemarie?
So you're going to have, I guess, pilot programs to initially get into certain areas. So I guess I have a multi-question with you.
Yes.
So your pilot programs, where are they going to be? But eventually, where do you want to be? And then about, what is the cost going to be?
Sure. Currently, we're going to have a template agreement with the city of Virginia Beach. That template, we hope, can extend into the rest of the Hampton Roads area as we expand in concentric circles around it. The original plan here is in Virginia Beach, that pilot, expand out from there, and then also in, doing a rural initiative in the Chesapeake area.
So everyone in the city of Virginia Beach?
At some point.
At some point.
At some point. And we'll get into a plan on how we can stage that, what the cost may be. And by the way, we're bearing the costs of deploying a network, and Microsoft's our partner on that, and we have some other partners as well, some strategic partners.
Starting at Lake Edwards and kind of move our way out, like throwing a rock in the pond. The pricing for an initial subscription is, at this point, going to be $19.99. And if they require any, see, I see some of you have a different plan, because the eyebrows went up. And if they require some in-house hardware, is what we call a customer premises equipment, that'll add like an extra $5. So the objective is to really make this affordable for most people. And we're also going to work in a situation where there are people that aren't able, that don't have a banking process. There are some people that don't utilize banks for whatever reason. We're going to look into opening a storefront here, so people can come like they often do, and pay their utilities at a storefront-type situation. So we're going to have that type of business relationship too. So just because you don't have a credit card, you don't want to use a credit card, won't keep you from being a Wildfire customer.
As I said, no contracts, we're not doing credit checks, we're not doing, it's a very seamless, low-friction process. We want high-speed, affordable broadband access to as many people as we can touch.
Very good. Jim Wood.
Two questions. First, what is this speed? I see what you saw what the speed is, but what is that compared to what we all have at home?
So take 4G LTE technology. I mean, the average throughput on that is 14 to 20 megabits per second. So we're going to provide service up to 100 megabits per second.
So it's somewhere between what I get on my phone and what I get at home?
It's going to be faster than your phone, for sure. And probably just as fast or faster than what you get from your cable.
So what does that mean? I'm the guy that talks about function, I'm not the engineer. So you're watching Hulu, you're watching Netflix, your kid is streaming, you know, a movie, and maybe somebody's like playing a video game. The objective is to provide enough bandwidth to do that. These companies that provide a tremendous amount of bandwidth, you really don't use near all of it sometimes, you know, depending upon what your situation is. So we're able to keep, you know, the price down because of the speeds that we're getting, but we want to make sure that everything that needs to be done or wants to be done at home, those services, those features, those capabilities, we should probably.
And there's unlimited data in the plan.
And my other question is this filtering aspect, because I've read a lot about filters put in place that stop kids from being able to do research, because, you know, they're searching a specific word or something like that, that
Right.
That gets jammed up in the filter. And I know different companies, if you are typing the wrong thing when you're doing on a
Yes.
Enterprise server, then you get, you get so, is, how do you get past that?
We have, we have a list that's generated daily. Call it the blacklist. And then we have a whitelist, where we go through and make sure the things that might be getting jammed, you go through the process of not circumventing someone from doing the research and other things. So it's a dynamic process. And the company we use, we're getting an expanded whitelist all the time, and an expanded list of things that are filtered out also. We're very well aware of that. And if you had any concerns or questions, we can really go into the weeds and explain how we do that.
Is the filtering, this is my last question. Is the filtering then necessary for the speed? Is that?
No, it's not necessary for the speed. It's, no, we're filtering. The speed is a, is a, it takes less to build the network. You get more speed because you're taking some of it off. The reason we're filtering is we believe that those, it should be a safe environment within the schools, within the businesses, within the homes. So we've filtered those things off. Now, it's a protected network, it's a closed, protected network. And, you know, we've had this discussion with Microsoft, we've had this discussion with some of the FCC people who are fully embracing the fact that it's an option, it's an alternative. We've had some people say to us in meetings, "Well, I don't like that." Okay, well, there's optional, there's other services out there. We're an option. This is how we do it. It does make the network inherently faster, but that's not the primary driver of why we did it.
Shannon, Jim.
You may have already answered this, but, so we're rolling this out in the underserved kind of pilot areas, but then it will be available as an option to anybody that wants it eventually?
Yes.
If that's the case?
Yes.
My position with the company is to help bring the revenue in. You know, you want to do these things, you want to give the service to the people that really need it. But hopefully, that from my standpoint, as the vice president of sales, that those kids are going to go home with that, you know, free internet account, and their parents are going to go, "Well, this is a cool service, and it's $19.99." So we can add more devices if we, if we do that.
So in order of priority, underserved, those who find it hard to afford, fully served as another very viable option, and those that are unserved completely. And it's amazing how many are unserved who do not have broadband access.
Yeah.
I'd just like to make a couple of comments. One, I met these guys through Microsoft. And Microsoft picked Wildfire 5G because they found that their technology was transformational. They've had an operation in Northwest Georgia since 2015. It's been operational for two years. It works. And two things. One, the city of Virginia Beach Public Schools has a one-to-one program. This is, every student will have a tablet by the year 2019. What Wildfire is offering is really mind-blowing to me. They are going to offer one free account for every public school student in the city of Virginia Beach and ultimately Hampton Roads. What is this going to do? When you have these tablets, you go home to do homework. For children that don't have access to internet, like the children that live in the Punggol, Blackwater, Creeds area, or for children who can't afford, whose parents can't afford internet in some of the disadvantaged areas, that tablet is worthless. And so you think about how disadvantaged they are from a standpoint of if they can't hook up to the internet to do their homework, they are at a disadvantage. That is about to change, which is very, very exciting. This is going to eliminate the homework gap. And then also, in terms of speeds, this $19.99 that they are offering in Northwest Georgia is for 100 Mbps, 100 megs per second. And I think that anybody who knows anything about purchasing internet knows that's an incredible price. And I think that a lot of people are saying, "Well, you know, is this real?" We are about to see and be able to touch this pilot program that's going to be up and running in the next, hopefully, 90 to 120 days. And so from there, it's going to expand out and cover all of Hampton Roads, which is going to offer several different things that I think are very cool. One, roving capabilities. So you think about the fact when they have all the area covered, which could be between 12 to 18 months, maybe 24 months, but that will be all of Hampton Roads. Right now, you're at home, your phone is hooked up to your home Wi-Fi network. You drive to work, you're not on a Wi-Fi network. You get to your office, your phone's on a different Wi-Fi network. Go to your friend's house, what's your Wi-Fi password? That is about to change. And so I think what you can see is that you will always be on your Wildfire network if you have a Wildfire account. And so this is truly transformational technology that I think is going to change the way that people think about the telecom industry. It's fascinating. You know, the speeds that they're getting right now are not quite the speeds that we're looking for to attract major big data businesses. However, one of the greatest benefits of the filtering program is when we have been to speak with different jurisdictions or large companies, the human resources director always says, "Well, I can't believe this." Because I spend X amount of dollars every year on a filtering system to make sure that my employees aren't on these bad sites, to make sure that our students aren't on these bad sites. That cost is about to be eliminated. And so it's very fascinating, it's happening here. This is going to be something great for the residents of Virginia Beach, it's going to offer options, and I'm very excited about it, and I can't wait till this project's done.
Good morning.
Are you having a single search engine, or is your filter on the backside of the search engines?
The filter is on the front end. We filter right from the front end, it's a private, protected network.
But will people have the same options of search engines? Or do you, are you limited to the search engine on your network?
Oh, you'll have the same option of your search engines.
Okay, so if someone uses GoDuckGo, because they don't want people capturing all their data and commercializing and sending advertisements, will they have the ability to access and use those kind of search engines, which you can use on your, I just understand what your, when you say filter, where the filtering takes place, and what data are you capturing about users and marketing, or whatever people do, like Facebook does? It's all legitimate, I'm just trying to understand when someone says filter, where the, where the
Again, we're not capturing data or information profiles on individuals and what they're searching or looking for. That's not any part of our business, and on the filtration.
Yeah, I mean, you'll have the full access to the internet, except for things that get flagged as adult content or malware. I mean, but, I mean, you'll still have Google, Yahoo, all the standard search engines and everything else in the internet.
Okay, I just tried, because I'm just trying to fit, when you say filter, just where the filtering was taking place. Thank you. I do think it's, Ben, you're going to be congratulated.
Thank you.
With a good job, and I look forward to seeing how it unfolds out. And everyone knows how I love competition. Absolutely.
Shannon, Jim will wind up.
So is there, is there a business component to this? It's why I'm here, you've talked, Ben, talking about the filters, but, I mean, as a small business owner, are those people that have just a one-man shop, that internet is very expensive for them? Is there a business price point?
We certainly want to approach those folks.
Absolutely.
You know, we're starting with the residents end of it, and then the small businesses. The idea would be to approach those people too, and serve them also. So, because small business, who wants to pay 80, 90, 100 bucks a month? You know, you could get a real high-quality service for a lot less than that.
Especially when they're a solo practitioner, doing, you know, paying
Exactly. And our society is growing and building on small business owners, less than five employees. That's where the growth is coming.
Hopefully, we can
Very good. Well
Get everyone in Virginia.
We thank you very much for your presentation. We look forward to getting the pilot done.
Yes.
You know, seeing it in action. But thank you all for coming down.
Thanks for your generous time allocation. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Well, we'll now move on to Stormwater Enterprise Fund Audit Results. Lyndon, we welcome you, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of city council. Coming back to you with the results from the audited stormwater management utility. So just as a quick recap, the resolution was adopted on April 18th. So the audit was conducted at the request of the council, and basically, it was to look at the stormwater management utility. So as we know, utility means the enterprise fund created to operate, maintain, and improve the city's stormwater management system. And this audit addresses the accounting for the revenues, the expenditures, as well as we looked at the CIP. Okay? So I mentioned the audit objectives. Ensure the proper and appropriate assessment, accounting, and completeness of the city's stormwater management utility revenue. Ensure the city's stormwater revenues are expended only for stormwater purposes, and the controls are in place for proper accounting for stormwater expenditures, and to ensure the city's stormwater CIP revenue and expenditures are properly accounted for and appropriately managed. Okay? We've, we worked with, obviously, Public Works, Public Utilities, the Real Estate Assessor's Office, ComIT Finance. So I want to thank everybody involved in regards to the hospitality. And before I go further, I do want to introduce my team, I do apologize. Gretchen Chudum, deputy city auditor, Tony Gonzalez, and Tim Bell.
Thank you all for being here, thank you for your hard work.
All worked on the audit. Okay? All right, and I know you know some of this, but for those that are either watching at home or watching on the internet, on Facebook, just give a real quick background. Stormwater management, sometimes definition of the word can be misconstrued, it's basically the handling and/or managing of excess rainfall in a manner that controls flooding and limits water quality degradation. Okay? Utility's been around for a while, established in 1993. And the main goals of the utility promote effective stormwater drainage, maintain and protect the city's long-term investment in its network, improve long-term investment in its network, improve the quality of the stormwater discharge into the city's waterways, and obviously, inform and educate our residents on stormwater issues. There's a city code, thirty-two point five dash four, that says the fees for each developed residential unit and non-residential unit regarding the bills. So effect, I mean, the rate affected July first, two thousand and seventeen. The ERU, or the equivalent residential unit, the rate increased from forty-three point three cents per day to forty-five point eight cents per day. Basically, a resident is paying a hundred sixty-seven dollars per year. Okay? Changes that just recently occurred, we went from bimonthly to monthly. And then Public Utilities assumed the full stormwater customer service, and the billing from Public Works affected July first, two thousand and sixteen. All right, so as you can see, the revenue being generated has steadily increased, and in fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, it was about forty million dollars. And as I mentioned, that's point four five eight per day, or about a hundred sixty-seven dollars a year. City stormwater infrastructure includes twelve hundred miles of pipes, seven hundred ninety lakes, forty-four miles of canals, five hundred and sixty-four miles of ditches, fifty-nine thousand manholes, fifteen pump stations. These were the expenses that we looked at as part of the audit. Okay? So there were fifteen thousand five hundred seventy-four work orders completed for maintenance and repair to the stormwater infrastructure throughout the city. In your audit report, the hard copy that we distributed in your packet on Friday, there were maps. Okay, so I know it's going to be hard to see when I bring it up here, but you did have a full map. But what we did want to show here is that the work orders and the work that is being done is actually dispersed throughout the city based on, you know, the population. So it isn't occurring in one section of the city versus the other. So the orange stands for completed work orders in eighteen. The green dots stand for the completed work orders in seventeen, and then the blue dots represent open work orders. Okay? It's dispersed around the population of the city. It's not in just one area, for example, like the oceanfront. Okay? Stormwater Management Utility, we've got the various programs under the Engineering Division, as well as the various programs under Operations and Maintenance. And we took a look at the expenses in all the various programs. Okay? So we have Public Works Engineering Division. They oversee the development and management of stormwater capital. The Operations and Maintenance Division does the actual hands-on maintenance of maintaining, cleaning, and repairing the various stormwater components. Each year, the fund transfers a budget amount to the CIP. Last fiscal year, it was about nine million dollars. Okay? Fiscal year seventeen, maintaining the current stormwater system accounted for approximately twenty-eight point eight million of the thirty-seven point eight million expended. Okay? About nine million was expended. From the CIP standpoint, stormwater infrastructure is the foundation that enables the city to manage stormwater runoff. The related capital project funding and expenditures are administered and accounted separately through the Stormwater Capital Project Fund. And again, in the audit report, there was a separate map regarding capital projects and where the capital projects are located throughout the city. Okay? Again, we've got a smaller map here, but in your hard copy map in your packet, you'll be able to see the same thing. The projects are in fact dispersed throughout the city. The orange represents the fifteen fiscal year eighteen completed projects. The green is the fiscal year seventeen. Okay? And the blue, if you could see it up there, represents open work orders. Again, they're distributed throughout the city. Okay? So that's a little bit of background. All right, well, what did we find? So the three main areas that I mentioned that we looked at are, number one, the stormwater revenue. Are we billing accurately, and are we billing all those that should be billed? Number two, we looked at the actual stormwater expenditures. And number three, we looked at the stormwater CIP. Okay? So first area, the billing, the revenue. Okay? So at the time of our review, there were a hundred thirty-one thousand one hundred sixty-four active stormwater accounts. Okay? And the accounts are broken up into commercial, government, multifamily, and residential. So the little graphic on the chart shows while residential makes up about ninety-three percent of the accounts, the ERUs billed represent forty-nine percent. While commercial represents thirty-five, three point five percent of the number of accounts, the ERUs billed from the commercial side is thirty-eight percent. Okay? So just to put things in perspective, there's a lot more residential, but the dispersment and the billing of the ERU, the businesses are picking up a lot of that. Okay? All right, what else did we look at? We formed an analysis and test of data designed to determine the completeness and accuracy of the stormwater account. So basically, we wanted, we pulled the data, we pulled the file, and we wanted to ensure, is everybody being billed that should be billed? And if they are, are they being billed properly? We interrogated the data, and this chart shows we did have some exceptions. Okay, when we're talking about a hundred thirty-one thousand accounts, you know, relatively small, but we did find some that Public Utilities, along with Public Works, have already working on, and many of them, they have, in fact, already made some corrections. There are still some items they are working on. Some of the exceptions, inactive accounts without corresponding active accounts, possible service misclassifications. If you're commercial, you're being billed as residential or vice versa. Accounts with active services but not billed, residential and commercial accounts billed where the ERU is less than one. Okay, the ERU should always be, should at the minimum be one. Accounts with active service not billed in the last ninety days. Accounts where the impervious area and/or ERU were blank. Okay? Erroneous G-Pins and inactive accounts with active service. All right, so we have met with Public Utilities in regards to these, and as I mentioned, they have corrected or they're working on them. Okay? Regarding, one we wanted to point out, we said there were seven accounts where the ERUs and/or the impervious surface area fields were blank. So that's part, when you're interrogating the data and you're pulling down the database within the systems, this is where we can get into and find these type of errors within the data. Okay? So obviously, if the impervious area is blank, it's hard to calculate a bill. Okay? All right, and just a little more in regards to what we did and how we did it. We compared the G-Pin to the actual city land book that we obtained from the Real Estate Assessor's Office. Okay, so we did a, you know, a very, very detailed analysis just to make sure that we aren't missing out on any accounts. Okay? Identified two thousand fifty-one parcels as high risk with regard to not being charged stormwater fees based on those. We did further analysis. You know, and as I mentioned, we did find some, we did find some errors in the data that we're working on. Overall, you know, those errors represented a hundred thirty-nine out of over a hundred thirty-nine thousand, so a very small percentage. So based off of that, you know, and one ERU's generating about three hundred something dollars per year, we determined the fiscal year seventeen total fees assessed and recorded are reasonable. Okay? We recalculated the last billed stormwater amount for each active account to ensure accurate calculation. Okay? Based off the rate, based off their ERU, are we properly calculating it? We determined that, based on pulling final plumbing and/or building permits issued in May two thousand and seven, to ensure new accounts, when they were necessary, when they were given the permits, were in fact added to the rolls. Okay? And based on Public Utilities research and field verifications completed through September twenty-second, we did identify, at the minimum right now, twenty-one additional ERUs that we're going to put on the rolls. At that time, it was about thirty-five hundred, very small. That amount will probably grow a little more, but nothing material. Okay? So the recommendation we came out of regarding revenue, the billing process for stormwater. Okay? In order to ensure the accuracy and completeness of stormwater account information, review the accounts identified as high-risk and exceptions noted, which they have started on, and then just implement a process to ensure changes to G-Pins, including but not limited to splits and mergers are properly identified and recorded. And a lot of these, a lot of the errors that have occurred are related to those changes in G-Pins. All right, next area, right, the bread and butter, stormwater operating expenditures. What are they doing with the money being collected? Are they using it for the purpose specified? Okay? Basically, it says, generally speaking, operating expenditures are the costs associated with those activities that maintain the current existing stormwater infrastructure. And these are the expenditures that are supported by the utility fee. Okay? Okay, and as I mentioned before, we, the code requires that it be used exclusively to provide services and facilities related to the stormwater management system, and that is exactly what we reviewed as part of the audit. Okay? And there's a listing, as you can see, of the examples of the various types of expenses. Okay? These are the various programs, runs from project management, operations, inspections, residential street sweeping, construction and engineering, surface water, mosquito control. A lot of people don't realize that's in the utility. And then there's some debt service. It's about thirty-eight million dollars. Okay? The various programs, the various services. Okay? And this is all in the report. Pipes and catch basins, they're doing cavens, ditches, pump stations, BMPs, spills, okay? Street sweeping and dredging. And our testing is part of the audit related to these efforts. And this just kind of shows a breakdown of the various categories, and we selected our sample primarily from what we deemed as the high-risk, high-risk areas, contractual services, other charges, and so forth. All right, what did we find related to expenditures? Review the cities, review the stormwater expenditures to ensure the city's stormwaters' revenues are expended only for stormwater purposes, and controls are in place for proper accounting. Means we obviously looked at the various trends and changes between the various fiscal years. We pulled samples of the documentation of the invoices. You know, we're looking for proper authorization, payment amounts paid from original invoices. Is it charged to the correct fiscal year? Is it charged to the proper budget unit and account? Adherence to the contract, tracing to work orders, adherence to the city code. Okay, of all the various expenditures we've reviewed, we did not note any exceptions. Okay? One area that we looked at in detail, because this was a city council initiative, we wanted to make sure we looked at the new contracted street sweeping program. Okay? In April, the council awarded a contract to sweep all the city's residential streets three-six-hundred with the goal of sweeping each street at least six times per year. So it's been phased in, it's been phased in, and there have been some things that kind of have slowed them down. But for this fiscal year, they are, they are in fact on track to meet that requirement. We've reviewed all the invoices since it's a new contract and the supporting documentation. Okay? And the contractor was in fact compliant with contract terms, and we noted no exceptions. And for those at home, you can actually get on to their website, plug in your street, and find out when the last time your street or your neighborhood was street swept. Okay? Or find out when it's scheduled to be street swept. And they've got a nice interactive map you could drill down on. Okay, so that's homework for tonight. All right, another area we've heard some concerns on is money being transferred out of the utility and being used for other sources. Are we pulling it out to build the arena? Are we pulling it out to give employees raises and so forth? So we made sure we looked closely at the various transfers. Okay? And as you can see, and I know it's small print up here, but this is the same exact chart in your book, I mean, in your report. The transfers were primarily for reimbursement of stormwater share of direct cost incurred by other departments. For example, repaying Public Utilities for billing, Parks and Rec for their efforts, the DSC for their efforts in regards to screening of the applications, Parks and Recreation. Okay? ComIT, okay? There's a transfer, obviously, of funding to support the CIP, and then, as I mentioned, reimbursement of indirect costs. Okay? So the money regarding what are the transfers, we tied it back to what's in our financial systems, and we could account for them and determine all the transfers made out of the utility fund were in fact proper. Okay? So the only small thing we did find, and really is more of a misclassification of expenses, there were some expenses that should have been borne by Engineering Division. Were borne by the Engineering Division that should be paid out of the operations, maintenance, but basically, that's taken it out of your left pocket, put in your right pocket, is still within the stormwater utility. Okay? So no other exceptions noted for expenditures. The last area, and this will be real brief, was the CIP, Stormwater CIP. Okay? So stormwater has risen to, risen to one of the major categories, city CIP. So fiscal year seventeen, it was close to twenty-three point eight million in seventeen. Fiscal year eighteen, council passed a budget of forty-three million. So stormwater CIP is now the third highest among the ten CIP categories, only behind roadways and schools. Okay? And the funding is primarily coming from bonds and then the amount that's transferred from the utility fund. Okay? The fiscal year eighteen, about forty-three million that's been funded. All right, what did we find in regards to CIP? Again, we thoroughly looked at this area. So we performed, we reviewed supporting documentation of fiscal year seventeen funding transactions, conducted visits, right? We all put on hard hats and vests. Okay, I even tried to prop open a manhole, right? Couldn't quite do it. But we conducted visits to several active project sites, performed walkthroughs through internal controls, met with the project managers, monitoring of contracts, record maintenance, review of invoices, tracking projects. We tested samples of expenditures invoiced, determined that the amounts quantities were accurate, complete, reasonable, recorded the right accounts, the activities, the projects. The CIP was sufficiently funded, okay? The CIP was sufficiently funded, okay? We met with finance and reviewed the supporting documentation to ensure financial-related closeout procedures were properly performed, in that there weren't CIP projects that were still open and funds hanging out there. So we met with finance. So regarding CIP, we did not have any exceptions. So bringing it to a close, based on our analysis and tests of the city stormwater management utility, we determined the revenues to be properly and appropriately assessed. We talked about the expenditures were fine, the CIP were fine. So overall, we determined that city stormwater management utility, system of internal controls and the oversight over its financial operations is in fact working effectively. And once again, I would like to thank my staff, as well as Phil's staff with Public Utilities, I mean, Public Works, Public Utilities, and all the departments that helped us on the audit.
Thank you very much, Lyndon. Questions or comments? John Moss.
I have two and one, one observation. On slide 15, in what category are churches captured? Are they captured as residential, or are they captured under commercial? Or in the database, can we distinguish between?
No, we can't. Gretchen, Gretchen can answer that.
All right. So what?
Gretchen, why don't you come up here?
Actually, Meredith might help me. So with church, you asked churches?
How are churches classified in the, in this taxonomy that you have?
Okay. A church would not, would be classified as commercial. But a parsonage that's owned by a church would be residential.
Gotcha. It would be nice to know, because this is a big issue. I'm sure other people hear this from churches. If you're running a budget commission, these small churches, this is a big thing. So if we could learn later, it'd be nice to break out, to know what that, those churches, what portion of commercial is churches, both in terms of number of accounts. I realize that's not for you, because actually you've done it.
No, we can get that. That's flagged, right?
I would like to know that.
Yes, I actually have that.
And my second question is, when you, and I do like your report, did a nice job, and methodology was easily understandable. Kudos to you.
Thank you.
But wasn't clear to me is, when you were doing the audits and verifying accounts, did you also audit whether or not the credit allocation that people got for their onsite BMPs was correctly performed, and they were getting the proper credit?
I don't, we didn't, we did not look at the credit, any credits that were requested and granted going back. We just looked at the billing and the revenue, but not the credits.
We did recalculate the accuracy of the credits that were, had been assigned to it, not the.
The methodology by which it was.
Yes.
Right.
Okay. And my last observation is on 28. Because in your written report, the full report, not the slides, you did mention that for the organic assets, the assets that we own as the city and purchased when they briefed us during the budget process, that those trucks are being used to provide daily sweeping services for town center and daily services for the oceanfront. And I do think, just to keep the slide accurate, if you're going to talk about contract sweep sweeping, you really are talking about street sweeping in general, because that's the thing that we said was our integrity. And I think the slide should represent what you have in your written report, so the public knows what we're doing with the assets that they actually purchased.
Okay. And I do want to just mention real quick, because I know there is public that is obviously watching, the full audit report is on vbgov.com/cityauditor, if you would like to download the full report.
But once again, a very good report. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Lyndon. And I think I speak for the entire council. Lyndon, we requested this. Results are good. So that means I gotta look at Phil and Bob and your staff and say thank you for doing a great job, because this is a lot of money, and it appears it's been accounted for most appropriately. So we really thank you for your hard work there. All right. We'll move on.
All right. Thank you.
We're going to the city managers' briefings.
Thanks, Lyndon. Arts.
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of council, I'm going to jump over to Mr. Earn and Mr. Davenport, and I want to just, as we swap out teams coming in and teams coming out, how, what a lovely morning we all spent together up at the Sandler. And there's some really cool brochures with some really important facts. And today, I'm going to let Emily do the introduction, because she was our hostess with the mostess this morning.
Thank you.
But I would let my two council members go first, if you'd like to make some comments.
I'm fine, Dave. We'll just go right into the report. I thought it was a good report, though.
Okay.
Great. Okay.
I'll be excited to hear it the second time.
Thank you.
Emily, we're glad to have you here.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Thank you so much for having us, sometimes for the second time. So over a year-long period, our local Virginia Beach arts and cultural organizations participated in the most comprehensive economic impact study ever of the nonprofit arts industry in the United States. Virginia Beach was one of 341 communities throughout the nation that took part in the study, and it was conducted by Americans for the Arts. And we have Jay Dick, who is the Senior Director of the State and Local Government Affairs with us this afternoon, to share the results that supporting the arts means business.
Thank you, Emily. Jay, we welcome you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. In addition to being at Americans for the Arts, I just have to give my street creds here. I'm a Virginian. I live up in Fairfax. I'm Commissioner for the Virginia Commission for the Arts. And so it's great to be back down here. I was down here, I met with you guys, Mr. Mayor, about three months ago, when Virginia Commission for the Arts was down here for our rollout of our Arts in the Military program that we are doing. So I'm glad to be back. I'm going to go through some of my slides a little relatively quickly. I just want to make sure you have them, but I want to get to some of the good stuff here while we're still going on here. So my job here today is to get you to think about the arts in a slightly different way. What is public perception of the arts? Oftentimes, it's the old lady of the opera glasses. The arts are for the elite. The arts are for those people who get high art. The arts are not for the common person. And really, the arts are for everyone. What the arts, the nonprofit arts do, and for profit, I guess, is quite amazing. It's after-school dropout prevention programs. It is with our military. It is, you know, with our returning veterans that PTSD or traumatic brain injuries, arts therapy with helping them through their processes. It's, we talk about SEEM. You might talk about STEM. I talk about SEEM, the Arts Connect Engineering and Math. When you look at what the businesses look for in their hiring, part of the top two, the top 10 things they look for is creativity and innovation. Well, arts education is a wonderful way to do that. We're not out to create a whole new army of artists. There's going to be a few that will be artists. We're out to create a whole new army of creative, innovative employees for our knowledge-based economy. We don't make as lot as much as what, as what we used to. But we certainly design and create a lot of things here in our, in our wonderful country. And so that's what we're out to do here. The National League of Cities, an organization I'm sure you're familiar with, with Mr. Mayor, has their top 10 things of, well, I like to call it the top 10 things that make mayors stay up at night. What do you worry about? And there's, the top one here is economic development. There's also, you know, crime, there's, you know, transportation issues, stuff along those lines. But the top one of the issues that mayors are, have concerns about is economic development. What the wonderful thing about this now is National League of Cities broke out economic development, and the far right-hand side is the arts and culture. So I love this for a couple of reasons. One, the arts and culture are seen as economic development, because that's what exactly they are. And in addition, that mayors realize this, and they're talking about it, and they're saying this is important to our local economy, our jobs, et cetera. Because if you have a really vibrant economic, or I'm sorry, vibrant arts scene, it's something that's used to recruit talent. I was just in Reno last week, and they have Tesla that set up shop a couple of years ago. They have 5,000 employees in the world's largest building, I am told, out in about 15 miles outside of Reno. And I said, that's wonderful, that you have 5,000 highly trained people that are working for Tesla. Now, how do you keep them? How do you keep them to make sure they want to live in Reno, stay here? So insert Virginia Beach for Reno. So you might have a lot of great industries. You do have a lot of great industries, highly trained workforce, but you have to keep them, because you have people nipping at your, 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 your feet all the time, saying, trying to poach your employees away. And so you have a lot of wonderful things here, and it's something that you have to keep thinking about. So one of the things that you do have is creative districts. You have the vibe, and I'm going to talk about that here in a little bit. But a creative district is just an area where either the government comes in and says, you know, there's tax credits, or there's some signs, or it's just a collaboration of arts organizations that come together to revitalize an area. Paducah, Kentucky, I'm not going to go to these, revitalize what's called Lower Town with Art Daughters Relocation Space. Carmel, Indiana, suburb of Indianapolis, used the arts to revitalize their downtown. They had a lot of vacant spaces there. Another great area I left to talk about, I'm sorry, we're going to just go back to this, is Providence, Rhode Island. How many folks have been to Providence, Rhode Island? There's something called Water Fire there. And so how many people remember the Beverly Hillbillies and the cement pond out back? Okay? So, you know, that's what they call their, their swimming pool, the cement pond. They have a cement river that runs through town. And they're like, okay, how do we draw people down to town? So the idea is, they took their assets that they have, a cement river, basically, and they put bonfires every 50 feet throughout it, on a Saturday and Sunday night throughout the summer. Tens of thousands, it's incredible, tens of thousands of people come down to Providence, Rhode Island to see those, basically, bonfires. But now they, but all the museums stay open late, they have a stage now, or a couple stages where they have arts groups come in and perform. It's all free. And the city makes a buttload of money, I'm sorry, makes a lot of money on, on this through, through tax revenues. And so again, the arts is an economic engine, and so they have a creative district in there, and it's a wonderful thing for them to use. And again, it's just taking what you have, what exists. So you have the vibe, and it's wonderful, and you have four or five blocks down the road, something called the Atlantic Ocean and the Boardwalk. And if you can combine those two things, whether it would be a walking tour or some public art in there, you're going to have a very vibrant area, because the cultural tourists are the ones you want, because they, through some of our other studies, they stay one to two days longer than their normal tourists, and they are 40% more likely to spend more than $1,000. So those are the people you want. You don't want the, the eight frat boys that are sharing one little hotel room on, on Pacific Avenue, you know, drinking their Miller Lite or something like that. You want those cultural tourists that are, you know, staying at one of your hotels, or going out, petrifying your, your restaurants, your theaters, your museums, you know, all that stuff. And so that's a wonderful thing. And so you're already doing a lot of stuff with, with the vibe. And my job here is to basically say, keep doing what you're doing, because it matters and it helps your, your economy. So the study that we did here, as Emily said, it's the largest study, you're one of 341 study partners, all the way from Butte, Utah, population of 1,500 and some, to the state of Pennsylvania, population, I don't know how many millions of people there, everywhere in between. And everywhere that I go that I do this, everyone is amazed of the economic impact that the arts have, whether you're Butte, or Virginia Beach, or Pennsylvania, everywhere in between. So in Virginia, I'm sorry, Virginia Beach here, the nonprofit arts are 87, or an $87 million a year industry here in, in the city. This is the nonprofit arts only, and it's the groups that we count. So if there's a group out there that didn't return their, their papers to talk about what their budgets are, we didn't assume that budget. We don't use any multipliers on this. We count, and we, we can count, and we report that. Of the 87, almost 88 million, arts organizations have about 26 million of that. That's just their budgets. That's payroll, that is, you know, their, their operating budgets. That's a, that's just a big number, just as is. But then you add in the audiences of almost 62 million in there. Because think about it, the, you know, you, you really don't have the arts without your audiences. And the audiences spend a lot of money that they wouldn't, and I'm going to get into that here a little bit, if they were just staying at home. And so we capture the audiences. We use Georgia Tech as our organization, does the statistical groups for us. They have a couple Nobel Prizes and statistics behind it. I'm a government affairs person. I don't do the statistics. But we work with a lot of different groups, and you can see on your, your little brochure here, you have some logos on the back. You have National League of Cities, just conference mayors, counties, governors, that have all signed on and said, you know, this is a good study, we believe in it, and we actually, they actually do a good job of promoting it for us here. So lots of great revenue, and then jobs. We all care about jobs. So again, the nonprofit arts through our AEP 5 studies found that there's 2,875 full-time equivalent jobs that are supported by the, the arts organizations. So again, it's not, you know, people oftentimes think, oh, those arts folks, they're, they're not real jobs. They're just waiters that kind of do stuff on the side. No, these are real jobs of people out there 365 days a year, you know, working to simulate your economy. I'm going to take a brief moment and switch off our AEP study to a different study. This is Dun &amp; Bradstreet, this is our creative industries. So Dun &amp; Bradstreet is a national organization, independent organization that catalogs for-profit and nonprofit arts organizations. And so they have identified eight different categories that are the creative industry. So there's museums, you know, of course, there's, you know, theater, stuff along those lines. And they found in Virginia Beach, there was actually 4,259 people that were employed by the creative industries in 1,133 arts-related businesses. And these, again, are only people that have Dun &amp; Bradstreet numbers. And so if they don't have one, we're not counting them. So this is, I asked people like this morning in our, in the session at the Sandler, and not everyone raised their hands, and so not everyone, even in that room, is counted on this area here. So 4,000 people, is that a lot? Is that a little? I always like to compare numbers for stuff like this. And so I went to the Virginia Beach Economic Development Authority, and I looked for your largest employers. So this is civilian employers. 6,000 folks work for the Joint Expeditionary Base, 3,600 Naval, GEICO, 2,700. Now, if all the arts and culture folks worked in one, worked in one building, or in a couple buildings, they would actually be your second-largest employer here in, in, in the city. And I think people don't realize that. Again, they think, oh, those arts folks, they're not, there's not a lot of them out there. They're mostly waiters, they do arts on the side. But again, these are real people. And again, if we put them all together, they would actually be your second-largest employee or employer that's out there. I want to switch to just one other area to really drive home the point. So everyone, I'm sure, reads the Bureau of Economic Analysis, satellite reports that talk about GDP, you know, Department of Commerce, you read that. It helps, it helps put you to sleep at night. A couple of years ago, they, they kind of randomly started doing.
It energizes John.
It energizes John, I can tell that. He's taking good notes for me here. What they did is they randomly started doing satellite reports for the arts and culture, and they only do these for large industries. And we're like, what, really? Okay? And we found out that the nonprofit arts are 700, I'm sorry, for-profit and nonprofit, are a $730 billion industry, this is everything, that makes up 4.2% of GDP. So again, let's compare that. If you look at the construction industry, that's 3.9%. If you look at transportation, 2.9. Travel and tourism is 2.6. I would actually contend travel and tourism is pretty close to arts and culture, and I would actually put those two together, but I haven't got them to do that yet. So we're a big part of the industry. So if, if you had a big transportation project coming into Virginia Beach, you'd say, yeah, we want that. That means jobs, that means economic activity. Or if you are building a new skyscraper, yes, we want that stuff. Well, guess what? The arts and culture are actually bigger than those other two things. And so every time there's a new little gallery opening, or there's another, going down to the vibe, there's another restaurant opening, you should be just as grateful for that, because it's actually a bigger part of GDP than a lot of the other things. Not the other things are not important, but again, people don't realize how big of an industry the arts and culture actually is. And again, this is Department of Commerce numbers here. This is not, these are not ours. But back to our study, though, also important to you is revenue. So we looked at our, our nonprofit arts groups that are here in Virginia Beach, and we just certainly found out that they generate $7 million in local and state revenue. So 3.7 in local government revenue and 3.3 in state government revenue. You guys do a really good job of supporting the arts and culture here in Virginia Beach, but not to the tune of 3.7. You guys, the nonprofit arts here are a net generating industry. So I always, when I'm out talking to people, not you guys, of course, but I'm talking to other elected officials, and they would say, oh, I would love to support the arts, but I, oh, but I need to repave Main Street, or I need an ambulance, to buy an ambulance or a new fire truck. Well, guess what? The nonprofit arts will help you do that, because again, we're a net generating industry. Going back to the GDP numbers, we're one of the few net exporters out there. We export $28 million more in arts and culture than we bring in to the, to the country. So again, getting you guys to think about the arts in a slightly different way of, it can be a really an economic engine for, for you guys. And then lastly, measuring, you know, we, how do we get some of these numbers here? We did audience intercept studies. So Emily and her team crowd 1,408 individuals over the last year to ask them a lot of different questions. And what we basically used that for was, how much money do they spend? Because that's, at the end of the day, what we want to know. So in addition, we found on average, someone that's going to an arts venue here in, in Virginia Beach, in addition to their ticket price, is spending $31.10. Remember, I talked about it earlier? You know, you just don't go out to the theater. You go have dinner beforehand, you maybe need a babysitter, you're going to buy a souvenir, different things along those lines. And so, you know, it's adding up $31.10 every time someone comes, comes into the area or goes to an event. Speaking of that, you, we also asked, where are you from? And we found that here. And we found that here in Virginia Beach, 37% of folks were non-local, so they're coming in from outside the city. And those are the folks you want, because they're bringing their money in, they're coming out of Norfolk, or Williamsburg, or wherever, and they're coming into Virginia Beach and spending their money. And that's exactly what we want. And we found, though, that those non-local folks spend, on average, of $38.12 in addition to their ticket price. So, every time you can get someone to go to the Sandler that lives in Norfolk, they're going to spend 38 bucks over here. That, again, goes directly into your tax revenues from restaurant accounts or different things like that. And so, again, it's a wonderful little thing, but as I was telling people earlier, you have to protect it because you have lots of competition that's out there. And if they're, you know, not coming, if you're not protecting your arts organizations or promoting them, whether it's through tourism, or just making sure that they have enough resources to keep their doors open, you know, they're going to go, these people are going to go someplace else. Because we asked the people in our survey, and almost 60% of the folks said that the primary purpose of their visit to Virginia Beach was that arts organization, or that arts event. And 65 of those folks said they would travel to a different place. So, if you're not offering it here, they're going to go someplace else, and they're going to take their $38 with them, and that's obviously something you really don't want to do. And about 9% spent the night here. So, and then, lastly, we found that about 49%, almost 50%, said they would have traveled to a different community to attend a similar cultural event. So, another way to slice and dice the data, that people, cultural tourists, your residents, value the arts and culture. And if they're not going to get it from you, they're going to take their hard-earned money, and they're going to go someplace else. And so, you have lots of great arts organizations here, and all you need to do is just continue to, what you're already doing, which is wonderful, and making sure that they have a good support from city government. Lastly, real quickly, lots of volunteer hours, people, you know, not only believe in the arts and culture here, but they volunteer it, to the tune of about $2 million, $2.5 million in volunteer time. And then, lastly, another survey we did, I want to just focus on the 73%. 73% of Americans say that the arts are a positive experience in a troubled world. We really do live in a divided world. We looked at just Las Vegas yesterday. The arts are one of the few things that really are a common language, can bring people together, and can, you know, really help encourage a dialogue. I always like to say, you can't spell the word bipartisan without the art in it, bipartisan. And it truly is, the arts are not left, right, or center, the arts really are. And that's why I think we're so successful, whether it's on the local level, the state level, or even on the federal level, where the Congress says, no, the arts and culture are a very valuable, important thing. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? We thank you so very much for coming.
Thank you, Mayor.
This morning, there were, oh, excuse me, Shannon.
Rosemary and I just spent the past three days at the Virginia Municipal League, it's not really a question, it's a comment. And a mayor of one of our cities in Northern Virginia came up to me and said, oh, Virginia Beach. I said, yeah. He says, the vibe district. I said, yeah, we've got the vibe district. Then he said, I need to learn more about it, because I've heard nothing but great things. And he gave me his card, and I'm going to hook him up with you, Emily. He wants to bring him and himself and two or three of his council members down to stay and visit the vibe district and see if they could copy what we're doing. I was like, I don't know if we want you to copy it, but...
That's wonderful.
He was really excited about it and heard great things.
Do you remember who it was?
Yes, but I'm not going to say just yet.
Okay. I'm just curious.
All right. Any other questions or comments? I'm sorry, Shannon, I didn't see you. But I heard it was a great meeting this morning, a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of energy. I'm very sorry I couldn't make it, but I know we're well-represented vagina bent. So, but anyway, thanks for the report.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, let's get down to city, city energy management.
This is Mayor and members of council, we haven't heard from Lori in a while, so she, in your Friday packet, gave you an update, and we've got her up front and center, and they're going to pull up their charts, and we're going to push on through. Lori, thanks for being here.
Yeah, glad to have you here.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, and city manager. We are here today to talk about our energy program. We're especially excited to be here, month of October, Energy Awareness Month, right?
All right.
Okay. So, we are very aware of energy here in the city, mostly because it costs a lot, right? But the good news is, not as much as stormwater. I saw that, okay. So, here's what we look like right here. So, electric is our largest commodity with regard to use and cost. So, we're over 130 million kilowatts a year in electricity. That has our attention for certain. With regards to fuel, we're almost at 2.4 million gallons of fuel, 1.6 therms of natural gas, and then a little bit of propane, right? So, we're trying to convert to natural gas wherever we see propane currently, so. So, taking a look at the cost, you can see the last three years, we are fluctuating between 18 million and 21 million, and we're doing the best that we can considering that the cost of energy just keeps going up, except for fuel, right? We're seeing back and forth a little bit on the fuel, but we expect in the long run, it's going to go back up again. All right, so we are very excited. This time last year, we actually adopted our first Energy Administrative Directive, that is 3.27. What that did was formalize our energy programs in ways that we weren't formal before. We started back in 2007. Mr. Hanson started our Joint Energy Committee when energy costs started going up. So, I don't want to make light of it, but he did have us in this room for about two hours every month. Nobody could leave till we figured out certain things. But one of the things that we were able to do is put in place an energy goal, and I can give you a little bit of an update how that turned out. We had a really aggressive energy goal for the first five years of our energy program, and we'll talk about that in a minute. Currently, this group is chaired by Deputy City Manager Tom Leahy. We have school folks that meet with us, we have city staff members, especially those that have those big facilities, convention center, the museums, all of those folks are in the room. We also have Dominion Energy in the room and Virginia Natural Gas. So, we are still here in this room, two hours every month, and that is one of our vendors. They come in and they talk about all sorts of energy-saving ideas. It's a good forum. If you're being approached by folks that have the latest and greatest, send them our way. We have directors and engineers and design folks and construction folks, all of us look at the technology, and we try to figure out if it's going to do great things for the city. So, it's a real good venue for you as well. Energy Management Office, it's two of us, Mark Podolinski and myself. We are located in the Department of Public Works Facility Management Group with Tom Nicholas. And we're in charge of doing a lot of things, including paying the energy bills. They come in, we manage the software. We track the CIP projects, we have an energy CIP, it's doing really great things for the city right now. And we have the administrative oversight of the Joint Energy Committee, trying to keep everybody on track. We're out there drafting the goals for them to review and bless. And so, we have the, we have that going on. We also have the Energy Champion Program. So, we're up over 725 Energy Champions throughout the organization. They actually have to take a test at the end of the training and say, okay, I get it. And that has gone very well, we're going to talk about that. So, in the past, we have had a fairly simplified approach to our energy goal. In the past, between fiscal year 2009 and fiscal year 2013, we were challenged by Joint Energy Committee to go out and save 10% on our electric usage on our buildings, making sure everybody's turning off the lights, making sure we're changing out the light bulbs, all that good stuff. And we were able to announce that we hit 15%. So, that was, that was pretty good, we were way over our goal. So, now, we have more comprehensive goals in place. So, we are focusing on the consumption reduction, but we also want to make sure the awareness is out there, that we're looking at the bills and analyzing the bills, that we're looking at our buildings for the long haul, and making sure we can get as much renewable and green features in them as we can. And then, the community and the recognition, that's a big part. We want to be known in Virginia Beach for being green and good stewards, and so, you'll see that. So, taking a look at our current energy consumption reduction goals, so now, we're focusing on electric, natural gas, and propane, because now, we have the software and we can do that. And our goal currently is to shave it all 1% a year for five years. So, here we are, we're in year two that we just wrapped up, that's the letter that you're reading now, and we were able to bring down our energy uses by 2.7%. So, we're on track to make our five-year goal. The second goal that we have in place with regard to consumption is actually making our facilities more efficient, and that is looking at the square feet and how those are performing. So, again, 1% a year for five years, we're actually close to making our five-year goal. Our buildings are becoming more efficient. As we build the new buildings, as we renovate the old ones, we're doing great things. All right, so as we go forward, we have other things that are going to save us energy for the long haul, right? Not just this five years, but the five years and the five years after that. One of those things is thermostats. If you haven't done your house yet, programmable thermostats are something that you should consider. Now, all of our buildings have some sort of device in place to control them. A lot of times, on our big facilities, it's a computer program, software, but in our smaller facilities, we still have thermostats out there, and employees had the ability to go out and change their set points, right? Well, we have adopted set points, and so, we wanted to make sure everybody was on the same page. So, these thermostats have lockouts, they actually can't go in and tamper with them like they could before. I'm sorry for anybody who's sad about that. We do have a few folks that get frustrated, I say dressing layers, just dressing layers. All right, so, we really require the buildings to be at 74 in the wintertime, and 70 in the summer, and then set back at night, so we could save as much energy as we can. Now, we do have some buildings that that's very challenging. It's very challenging for like the rec centers, you don't want to have them overheated when they're working out, right? 74, too warm. So, we want to make sure we document all the exceptions that are out there that have been granted over the years. We're working with IT, we want to turn the computers off, we want to figure out how to turn off all those printers. There's a lot of vampires out there that we can tackle and save more energy with. We want to adopt our formal retrofit strategy, that doesn't roll off the tongue. But we are doing a lot of things automatically through our program, working with the new design folks, working with building maintenance, but we haven't put it into writing, like every detail of what we look at. So, we want to formalize that this year. And we want to go out there and touch all of the cold vending machines. We're hearing great things about energy misers, it actually puts the machines to sleep if nobody walks past them for 15 or 20 minutes, and it can cut off about half the energy per machine. So, we're hearing good things about that technology, and we have about 90 of those machines out there based on our inventory. Capital improvement projects to save energy, we dabbled a little bit with windows, we didn't see a lot of great payback there. Heating and air conditioning, awesome payback, two, three years. So, we want to keep looking at those projects, partnering with building maintenance to see when they're replacing stuff. Lighting retrofit projects, that's really had the most of our attention. We're out there making sure there's no more T12s out there. And right now, the way the prices have come down on LEDs, that is the technology we're putting in. If you haven't seen it yet, that's the convention center, that is their exhibit hall, they had a great retrofit project there. That whole building is almost all LEDs now, and that's what we're doing with our other facilities. There's a little bit of a story behind this picture. So, these are the gentlemen that are out in Fleet, and they work in the heavy-duty shop, and they are the mechanics, and they were so excited when they got the new LED lights, we had to go out and take their picture. But while we were out there, I found out the light-duty shop was jealous. And I said, well, we have more CIP money, let's do the feasibility study. There was a great payback, so now, they have their lights too. So, hopefully, it does, it makes a difference when you can brighten up their workplace. It does make a difference. All right, energy awareness goals. So, like I said, we're really trying to reach out there and get as many energy champions. If I had my way, everybody'd be an energy champion, but I haven't quite got everybody else there. All right, so, our goal is to have as many energy champions in the organization as possible. We have a traditional classroom where they can come out and sit with us and watch an energy movie, special sessions held for departments, I say 10 o'clock on a Saturday night, if that's when the shift is, that you have time, we'll come out. And then, e-learning, we're trying to get this whole program online, so no matter what shift, what time you work, you can go on and take the course and be certified. So, we're working with learning and development on that. Increased energy analysis, we have really nice energy software, the Department of Energy bought this software for us when we started our program. So, it's been nice, we can audit our bills as we import them into the system. The other thing that we have done is partnered with the City Auditor's Office, and he has helped facilitate a contract where we have a third party comes in, they audit our bills for free, and then they get to keep a certain percentage of what they find, similar to the healthcare audits. We have that for energy now, and they have found quite a bit, and so have we. So, I'm going to go through those numbers. Heating and air conditioning controls, we really want to power down our buildings when they're unoccupied, that is a huge opportunity for us. Demand response programs, if you're not familiar with it, PJM is our grid in our area. It's not just Dominion Energy, it's actually bigger than Dominion, and they will give you money. If they are under duress, they are having issues with the grid, and you come off the grid at the time, they can send you a check. And we have two groups that are working on that right now, Convention Center and Public Utilities. Public Utilities has gotten as much as $125,000 one year for coming off the grid at the right time. So, we want to keep looking at opportunities there. And then, every year, we post our reports, actually, they're out there quarterly, but once a year, we're requiring every department to go out and look at every energy report that they have assigned to them on BeachNet, and verify that those are the spaces that they occupy, and that the energy bills are accurate. And so, we're in the process right now, we'll wrap that up in October. And then, we want to make sure everything, because there's so much movement sometimes, we want to make sure everything is up to date. All right, so, energy savings, what have we found? We found that Dominion has a hard time with meter reading. One, true story, one bill alone, Central Library, over $110,000. So, we've been adding up all these peak demand issues. They said that the meter readers are having a hard time resetting the meter or something. But we're watching for it, and we've gotten back 100, almost $175,000 in these errors, and these are happening around the state. So, we're working, making sure other cities and counties are looking for these errors. Streetlights, traffic signals, we partnered with Traffic Operations to look at their bills, making sure that there's nothing on there that shouldn't be, and lo and behold, we found about $36,000 worth of things that we were able to clean up. Convention Center is not using as much energy as they were projected to when the building was built, it was an opportunity to renegotiate that contract demand, and we brought that down to $9,000 a year savings going forward. And doing the energy retrofits there, that's one of those things that helps with that. Then you have rate schedule changes, you know, there's like 15 different rate schedules, so you're always trying to figure out the best one. It's a lot of things to look at and analyze, but we're doing it. And then, whenever we do an energy retrofit project, PJM will give you money for the reduction off of the grid in the future. And so, we have about $40,000 that'll come in the next four years for submitting our projects. So, that's a really good opportunity for the city. We're going to continue to do that. Renewable energy continues to have our focus, green building, all of these things are looked at every time a new facility is built, trying to figure out when it's cost-effective, and then, looking at lead, energy efficiency standards, we continue to use Energy Star, so there's a lot of really good things that you're going to see here, because we're building a green wall here in the city hall, so it's going to have a picture of all of our green facilities, so everybody can see in the community. So, they'll say, oh, okay, I didn't know my rec center was this, or I didn't know that the visitor center was that. So, that's being framed currently. We track, we get a lot of mentions, we get invited to a lot of conferences, and we track all of that, to make sure we're getting as much recognition as we can. We are very excited. For the state, we received a second-place award for the Virginia Energy Council in December, so we are excited to go meet the governor and accept this award. And we're going to continue to submit our projects, you know, for review and try and get recognition for them. If you're not familiar with it, the American Council for Energy Economy, they have been outranking the 51 largest cities in the country. I don't know why 51, somebody knows, but I don't. But 51 is the number, but the number I'm more focused on is that we went from, we were 46th in 2015 when we got assessed, and we made a work plan, tried to work through some of the things that they recommended that we work on, and we were able to get to 36th this year. So we're going to continue to work on that. All right, so Virginia Energy Purchasing Governmental Association, that's a very long title for VEBCA, is what we affectionately call it. Now, this is the group that negotiates the electric contract with Dominion, they negotiate the terms and conditions, when we're having issues, we want to make sure we take it to them and hopefully get some attention. And so our involvement has been a priority, because we want to make sure we get attention. We had over 20 items that we were unable to get resolved with Dominion, and we've been tracking them and requiring them to meet with us monthly to whittle this down. A lot of it's billing credits that we were overcharged, and so we've been working hard to resolve those things, but having a board position helps, right? And Joint Action Committee, I volunteer to head up that committee, that's the group where when there's issues with Dominion, you get Dominion folks in the room next to the cities and counties, and you work through it. So I'm the person that gets to bug Dominion on a monthly basis. And then we have an energy conservation team, so myself and Jim Morris is a part of that with the schools. So we're going to continue to give that our attention, and we know that there's issues, and we're hoping in the negotiations that are coming up, we can resolve some of them. Lots of planned energy projects, a lot of these are going to be LED lights, we're out there making sure we're as efficient as we can be, we want to power down the buildings, a lot of sensors that are going to be out there. So we're excited about getting started on our next five-year plan. And that is it.
Thank you very much, Lori. Any questions or comments? Yes, sir, John?
I'm just referencing back to the 29 September memo, just so you can kind of...
Yes, sir.
And I noticed that, I went back and did some additional calculations on the chart, as you can imagine, and I wouldn't know when we reduced, because natural gas is the cheapest thing going forward, probably for the next 20 years, in fact, is most of the forecast. And in fact, that was the cheapest energy we consume, in fact, the price was down 10.27%, 17 over 15. But I was wondering, did we reduce our consumption but maintain the same facilities that were using gas, or did we change buildings to electricity that once used and consumed gas, and we changed the source of the energy that performed the work?
So propane is the only thing that we have been replacing, propane has been going to the natural gas. So electric is primarily lighting and, you know, augments the HVAC systems, and you have some geothermal that's going in some of your facilities also, but you can't 100% replace any one commodity.
Well, we last thing, if we look forward to bigger, the newer building, like Centerra the boiler system, which is natural gas, or they don't use, I'm assuming that we'll be looking at gas, because it's at per the cost, it's like one-fifth the cost of electricity when you look at the, these costs that you're paying, that's why I'm just asking. And also, I was asking, because when I looked at the 15 over 17, the gross rate of electrical consumption, did our square footage go up? And that's caused that to go up to a boil-up and a soar rate, I'm just trying to get a feel for, it did go up 1.2%.
The cost?
Well, the actual usage on the 17 over 18 was up 1.5%. Was the increase, it went from 441 to 444, and I'm just curious, did our square footage go up?
It has gone up.
There's about six new buildings that came online at that point, which is why we also track the MMBT use per square foot, because the real number of getting more efficient is over your inventory per square foot, is it getting better? We have grown, so...
That's great, that would be a good thing to have, because that was, I think that's a good news story, and I just want to make sure we get credit for it, because if you're expanding your footprint that much, and you're only raising your overall thing 1.5%, that tells you what you do on your base, that's a good story.
I agree.
That's all my questions.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I think, just thank you very much for the hard work.
Thank you.
Please pass that on, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great job, Lori.
David Lance Replacement Ed Brazel.
Yes, sir, y'all got a white paper this weekend to talk a little bit about Virginia Beach Rescue Squad ambulance decision process we used. I'm going to ask Ed to make sure that he included a conversation of two agenda items you got today, and these were decisions you made to provide low-interest loans to others that were affected in Hurricane Matthew's losses, and we're finally actioning that today, and he'll include that in today's briefing as well, in case you had some questions.
Ed, we're glad to have you.
Thanks, sir. Mayor, Mayor's Counsel, Mr. Hanson, just to be a quick presentation, we've got two things, he said, one that you're going to be voting on today, hopefully on consent, but here for any questions you've got, and that's the loans for the two rescue squad ambulances. This is, we do this twice a year, to match up with the grant cycle and the squad's budget cycle, so this is the call with Kempsville and Plaza. They did receive 50% matching funds from the state for that project. We also have here to talk about the Virginia Rescue Squad ambulance damaged by fire. On those loans and the grants, I did mention that, that the squads have tremendous amount of success over the past few years, over a million dollars in grants that they've been able to get, that probably the city would have been challenged to get that kind of funding at our level, so we look forward to talk about the loans. But primarily, it's about the Rescue 14 ambulances, just quick background, you've heard this many times before, but the 10 squads own and operate their own ambulances, they buy these ambulances using their funds that they raised through fundraising with the help of those grants. Sometimes they do come to you to get the no-interest loans to help make those purchases, and then, of course, the squads make the payments over a five-year period, and we've never had a default on that. The city has been very generous in the past with this. So the ambulance, though, wants their service in terms of insurance, we're self-insured, the city provides the liability coverage, the collision coverage, but what is not there is total replacement coverage. We have a catastrophic policy for these large vehicles with a $50,000 deductible, so immediately there's a $50,000 loss to the squad if there's an impact, and the coverage only covers really the value of the asset over that. What is different on the replacement, if it's a city-owned vehicle that goes out and gets totaled, destroyed somehow, we just move it to the head of the line for the next replacement in our normal procurement process, and just everything else in the queue gets delayed a little bit, whereas the squad, they may not have the cash flow or the plan initially to make that immediate replacement, and that's downstream effects for them, though, and also to us as the city, is the delayed replacement increases the load on the remaining fleet assets, which increases maintenance costs that we, the city, then bear. So they don't have the same flow of replacement that we do. So going back to June 28, I'm at Virginia's General Hospital, 1425 was destroyed by catastrophic fire, cause was unknown, nobody was hurt fortunately, but it did result in a loss of the vehicle, all the radios inside and some of the equipment in the back. This ambulance only had a fair market value of a little over $35,000, which then fell below the $50,000 deductible, but the squad still expected to have two years of life remaining on that truck. We run these for eight to 10 years, to completely replace the ambulance would be a quarter million dollars. So what we're here to do today is, is there a way that we can help the squad with this replacement? We looked at some options, one, we could give them their fair market value, and that's a logical, rational approach, this is what the ambulance is worth, we give them the fair market value, but that doesn't match what the service life still left in the vehicle. The other alternative, we could fully replace the ambulance, and to be direct, the rescue squad has not asked the city to give them a quarter million dollars to buy a brand-new ambulance to replace an ambulance that had years of service. The other alternative was to look at that cash flow, if they're going to have to replace that ambulance two years early at a payment of $25,000 a year, can we help them with that cash flow with a grant of $50,000? Or, of course, alternative four, we can do nothing other than just loan them money, the insurance is what it is. So what I'm here to do, the staff recommendation today, is we are recommending that the city provide the Virginia Rescue Squad with a grant for the $50,000 to make them whole in what their out-of-pocket expenses will be.
I bet you everyone at this table agrees with that. Move on.
Yes, sir. And so that'll come, what we'll do is we'll...
I think we'll move on.
Yes, sir.
I think we're fine with the loans, because we keep continuing to do that.
Excellent, so what you'll do, what we'll do is we'll put this on an upcoming agenda for reserve contingency, and I'll see you next February, March for other loans.
Thank you, Ed.
Chief.
Listen, we appreciate everything y'all are doing over there, and those volunteers are the best ever.
Do building dedication next month on the 18th.
That's great. Any liaison reports? We've got 20 of right now, I don't want to cut off anybody. How about any comment?
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Shannon and I were at the Virginia Municipal League Conference, and I'm really pleased to let the council know that our Shannon has been elected to be the urban chair for the Virginia Municipal League.
Well, congratulations, Shannon, we're proud of you.
Well, and that also means that she has a seat on the executive board.
That's great, thank you, congratulations. Great thing.
Thank you for that one.
She's a good friend. John?
I know that we're voting on our legislative package today, but there is a, but this item wasn't in our legislative package, but this is regards to HRT, might have saw the article in the paper, but their constant push to get a dedicated source of revenue, and somehow using that as the reason why they can't count, but I don't think that has anything to do with their ability to count, and I don't think them having a dedicated source of revenue is in any municipality's best interest. I think the customer relationship, and I would just hope that enrichment should just come up, that we as a city wouldn't be endorsing that that's a good idea. I don't know, I'll let y'all think about it, I'm going to bring it back up again, but I think people need time to think about something, but this has serious consequences should this be successful, none of which I think are good, but it's something I think that'll probably be in their legislative package, but I think it's not in the best interest of me.
Barbara, then Shannon.
Yes, we had, some of you have probably had the same emails that I've been getting about the logging operation that's going on at Lake Placid, and I think there's a newspaper article that says that several years ago, that developer or that owner of that property offered it to the city, and the city declined.
That's what the article says.
I can't believe if it was offered to us as a gift, we would have declined that. I would really like to know some of the background, it may be that it was offered at a price, but related to that...
It's in the paper.
Yeah, or at least what we got today. Several years ago, I had this map done for me, which actually was done in 1999. It shows...
Just a couple years ago.
Seems like yesterday. This is below the green line, all of the properties that are preserved by some public agency, such as the federal government, the state government, City of Virginia Beach, Nature Conservancy, the ARP. I would really like to have this updated, but it would be awfully good if we could have it for the whole city, not just the area below the green line, because we've acquired a lot of properties since then, you know, with the open space program, and of course the BRAC properties, but the really neat thing about this map is that you can see the properties along the waterways that the city owns, and I think a lot of these properties that we've acquired through open space, like Stumpy Lake, Pleasure House Point, and so forth, are great properties that assist us with stormwater and drainage issues. But knowing this and what we have acquired, and then I know that we also, as properties developed along this, the Holland-Swoll area, which is where Lake Placid is, that we only rezoned the higher properties, and the properties that were floodplains and so forth were dedicated to the city, and they would show up on a map like this, which would show properties that the city owns along West Net Creek farther up. But this would be a really good property, map to have for the whole city, which would really help us see how well we have done and are doing in keeping development out of areas that are very flood-prone.
Thank you.
And I hope we would never decline to take property that was very forested, that is offered to us, and I would like to know why we did decline that.
Shannon?
On Friday, our Social Services Department, I think I mentioned this last Tuesday, we hosted the regional or state Family First event at the Hilton. This is an annual event for all social services providers, counselors, municipalities across the state, and it's, like I said, it's held annually, and this was apparently the largest attendance that the event has ever had.
That's because you greeted them.
Yeah, that was it. Donette and her team did a great job pulling this together, had a great reception the night prior, and was very well attended, the vendors, the sponsors were all very happy, as well as the attendees with their education. And the next thing, Linda Russell, sitting behind me, gave me this a little earlier, the DeRican Chef, which is at 3208 Holland, 3208 Holland Road, they're having a fundraiser October 6, I think this is this Saturday, I forget, I can't read what time because it's in Spanish, it's Friday, but if you come in, it's $10 a person, and the money's going to go to help the flood victims or the hurricane victims in Puerto Rico.
Right, thank you.
So DeRican Chef on Holland Road.
Yes, sir, Joe.
Were you going to say something?
No.
Were you going to say something?
No, it's not.
Well, I just wanted to compliment Mrs. Frazier on her hard work for the signing ceremony that we had Sunday for the sister city agreement between Vibling and the City of Virginia Beach, and a lot of folks from council were involved in this, Shannon and Jessica were there Thursday night, or Friday night, sorry, and then we had other events throughout the thing, and there's a little bag for y'all, that the mayor of Vibling gave me Sunday to make sure everybody had, and, but I just wanted to thank the mayor, the vice mayor, and Ruth for all their hard work at the signing ceremony, Mr. Steele was actually here from Germany, which was nice, and I think especially with our connection with Steele, it's really important that we have this connection there, so thank you, everybody.
No, thank you, and thank you, Ruth, and it went very well. Other questions, I mean, other comments? Okay, let's see what we can do here, sir.
All right, under ordinances and resolutions, anybody have any comments on that, I have you abstaining.
Or B.
Or B.
Right.
In the interest of disclosure, at the request of the Human Rights Commission, we did reinclude the request for Medicaid expansion.
Add Medicaid?
Yeah, it's in the package, but I just wanted to be upfront about it, that we did that as a request.
John, I understand you're abstaining on item F5F, is that correct?
Right, and did we get the numbering corrected for the details relative to the table of contents in the agenda package?
Say that again.
The numbering of the details in the legislative package, if you've noticed, the table of contents is different from the actual detailed attached, there's only 14 items in the detail, but there's 15 items in the table of contents, and also the numbering in the details in the packet don't even align with the table of contents in some instances, that would need, I would think, would need to be corrected before we voted. You notice the last item in the detail is 14, and if you go to the table of contents that we're talking about, I'm going to get to that, hold it there with me for a moment, and that's on this page, you'll see there's 15, and that item is 15, and then the items don't always match up with the numbering in the table of contents, but I'm mentioning that because I don't know what to say, I've never voted for the Medicare expansion, and that wasn't something we discussed before, and I'm fine with it as is, I just want my vote there, but this does need to be corrected for the record.
Very good, and we'll ask, get that put together for us. Okay, thank you. Any other take on that?
I do have a question. On the item about the membership on the Board of Building Code Appeals, is this what we have existing, and we're just saying that we're not going to have a limitation of the number of terms, we're still going to be appointing, but we can see these, and we had talked somewhat about instituting some appeal for stormwater, that's not included in this call?
That's a separate board.
That's an entirely separate thing, that's not one of these.
Okay, we'll move to planning, Mr. President.
All right, under planning, item one...
So everything on H is on consent?
Item one, is everything under ordinances?
Yeah, except for the no for...
Do we have speakers?
Except John's abstention on number...
And no on Medicaid.
F, and that's it.
That's it. Do we have speakers on 5F?
I had a guy call me earlier that he's coming to speak on 5F.
I just was told that...
Amanda from the clerk's office said we have speakers who are signed up in opposition.
On 5F?
Yes, the Ford Story Fund.
I think we have the expertise to...
Okay.
Federal Fire Department.
All right, we'll pull it then. Under planning, the enclave, we have a request for deferral on that.
No, that's the Grace Bible.
Do we have a recommendation, Mr. Phil?
No, not enclave, all right.
Number two has been...
It's item two, yeah, yeah, it's item two that wants a deferral.
A deferral for two weeks, is that correct on that one?
November 7.
November 7.
I would like to make a couple of comments on that one, just to let the council know what we've been trying to do, although it can be on the consent agenda to defer to...
I'll call on you, got it.
Okay, and I will not be supporting the enclave, I'd like to be able to say why, but if y'all want to put it on the consent agenda, you can, and I'll say why. I'm voting no out there.
Is everyone okay with consent? Is everyone okay with consent in favor?